Good evening, this meeting of the Jefferson County Board will now come to order. Roll call please.
We have 29 present and one absent.
Thank you, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Weimeyer, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're invited to remain standing for a moment to contemplate our service to the public. Thank you. Are we in compliance with open meeting law?
We are in compliance.
Thank you. Next is approval of the agenda. Would anybody like the order of the agenda altered in any way? The Chair has a request to, since we have a number of citizens here interested in a zoning issue, that we move the zoning report up to immediately after number eight, public comment. Is there any objection? Okay, we'll proceed with what was number 15 on the agenda now being number nine. Next is approval of the November 12th, 2019 meeting minutes. Supervisor Renard, please.
I move approval of the minutes as presented.
Moved and seconded to move to approve the minutes as presented. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Prose no. Minutes are approved. Next is communications.
The zoning committee notice of public hearing is December 19th at 7:00 PM. You also have a copy of the Treasuries Report and then there are several handouts from the town of Sumner, three of them, that should all be on your desk.
Thank you. We'll now go to public comment. I'll go over the county board rules regarding public comment. The rules state that each speaker shall have a maximum of three minutes to speak and the aggregate limit for public comment is 30 minutes. Seeing that we have more than 10 people registered for public comment that could run us up against that deadline, so I ask that you keep your comments brief if you can, under three minutes. Also, if there's no objection from the board at the discretion of the Chair, we have the Town Clerk of the City of Sumner here, who intends to speak on behalf of the three Town Board members from the town of Sumner and the Chair would intend, if there is no objection, to allow that individual to speak for four and a half minutes. Is there any objection to that? Okay, thank you. Our first registrant for public comment is Sandy Hines from the town of Sumner. You can come up to the podium here, please, and speak into the microphone. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Sandy Hines. I'm from the town of Sumner. Fifty years ago, my husband and I bought land in Sumner, a beautiful township, safe, healthy to live in. We didn't have enough money to buy a house, so we built our house. Every piece of wood got stained, every nail got hammered by us. So this home is special to us, more than a bought-in home. Anyways, I am not a scientist and I've heard about all these chemicals and these discharges, these gases. I really do not understand all of it. But I do understand that if you put a pit in and you put human waste in there, treat it or not, a pit only has a partial cover on it and the gases will leak out. And the gases can blow a long ways and the gases can cause a lot of diseases. You can have some leakages and other problems with a pit, too. I know you've all heard about Johnson &amp; Johnson and their talcum powder, Roundup, Agent Orange, Dow Chemical, other places that have had problems with about the same thing, only it would be leakage in the water. And it can take up to 40 years for these problems to surface. I'm almost 80 years old. I don't have a lot of time left, but I got family, people that want to stay even in our house. Now, all these different diseases can pop up and there's no way of figuring out where they're coming from, except we do know the gases do cause problems. Our friends want to put a pit in, over a million gallon pit, to store human waste in, a mile from Lake Koshknon. I have the simple solutions. Lot of people aren't going to like what I came up with, but I'm just a regular person, no scientist, no attorney. And I don't know if this is just a money issue. I know in my part, it's a health issue for the people, my friends, and you and your friends and family. One thing, we could have the people who want the pit pay for the rest of us to have our pit, our wells checked once a year. Let them pay for it, but we'll be safe. Another thing, we could set up a medical monitoring system to where if anyone comes down with any of these diseases that are caused by the gases, let the pit people pay for our monitoring. Another thing, what about our realtors? New people are coming into our area. Are they going to want to buy a piece of property that could have bad groundwater? Are they going to want to buy a piece of property that stinks? Are they going to entertain on a patio when it smells so bad you can't be out there? The flies and bugs have been in human waste and now they're coming over on your hot dog? I really don't think so. How about the people in Lake Koshknon? They come from all over to our beautiful lake. They bring their boats in and they swim. Do they want to see signs up? Swim at your own risk. Our water might be polluted. It can happen. Oh yeah, these are bold figures, but really, think about it, it can happen. Would you want to swim in that? Homers, no parties. Have the pit people do what the other septic people do. They haul their waste to a plant and they pay to have it processed. They make it safe. So is this a money deal? Do they not want to take and charge the money to their customers? They can write it off, it's a business expense. I'm a businesswoman. For 50 years, I've run a business and I've paid out a lot of expenses that I did not want to have to pay, but for my friends, for my life, for my business, I paid them. That's the way, the business way, the business world works. So with that, all I can say is, I want you to really consider this. Take it to your own heart. Take it to your own family. Do you want to pass a problem on to them? Maybe not today, but like I said, it can take up to 40 years. So, thank you and please consider doing the right thing.
Thank you. Next is Richard Hines from the town of Sumner.
Richard Hines, our back road Cambridge. I just wanted to say I agree with everything my wife said. And if you've been paying attention to the papers lately, the western counties of the state, the wells are totally completely contaminated, human feces, salmonella, nitrates. And this pit, eventually, it's going to crack, it's going to go into the groundwater, we're going to have the same thing here. So I just kind of think that maybe all of you should really consider this and cancel it out. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize in advance if I mangle somebody's name. I will remark that you have remarkably good penmanship, so it should be pretty easy. But next is Edward Clinjman from the town of Sumner.
Hi, I'm Edward Clinjman. I live down the north shore in town of Sumner. You know, I did a little bit of research, I've heard a lot of people's pros and cons on this, but you know, if we don't have this pit, down the road, it's going to start costing the taxpayers big money to have your septic tanks pumped. They got holding tanks around Lake Koshknon that every time it floods, the human waste goes into Lake Koshknon. Everybody says how beautiful the Lake Koshknon is, but every time you have a flood, it's not. And what it's going to do, why not, they've got to haul this miles away and it's going to start costing the people that's got these holding tanks, big money to have them pumped every three months. But I, you know, there's a lot of pros and cons, but I think everybody should stop and think about what good it's going to do. Because this is all regulated by DNR. You know, he's not going to just do what he wants to do. He's got to follow the rules. And I just wish the people would think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Glendon Rewalt, Town Clerk of the town of Sumner.
First, I would like to thank the entire county board of supervisors for the time to address you on behalf of the town of Sumner Board. My name is Glendon Rewalt. I'm the clerk of the town of Sumner. I have been directed by our board to convey the following message on behalf of the town board in reference to the zoning amendment petition, R. 4179A, and the conditional use petition, CU. 2002-2019. First, our town board would like to make it perfectly clear to the committee that the town board did have a discussion on the spreading of human sludge and the opinions against such action abound among many of the town residents. But let us also make it perfectly clear that the board recognizes that this is first and foremost, a matter of rezone with the ultimate purpose to allow for a conditional use for a 1.37 million gallon open pit to hold untreated sludge, which includes human waste pumped from holding tanks and septic tanks and waste food products, which could include animal pouch, which is best described as animal stomach, guts, bowel, and the contents thereof. This conditional use was also presented with the verbal acknowledgement by the petitioner of the intent to spread the contents held in the open sludge pit on cropland within the town of Sumner. The town board has done their due diligence in educating themselves, weighing the options and the benefits and non-benefits, such as operation would have on the town in its entirety. The town board sent a well-thought-out explanation of their denial to the zoning committee. The town board supports the language that can be found on page 47 of the Fort Atkinson Comprehensive Plan. The board follows this language as a base norm for decision-making. The language reads as follows. A. Discourage loud, unattractive, and loiterous rural businesses in the areas that will likely be appropriate for future neighborhood development. B. Discourage uses and project designs that typify a rural level of improvements that will not fit in the context of a future urban environment or may impede future investments in high-quality development in surrounding areas. The Sumner Town Board is urging the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors to what is and always has been the norm, which is to support the town board who makes decisions in the best interest of the entirety of the town's current and future health and stability. The town board of the town of Sumner does not feel this operation is in the best interest in the entirety of the town. This rezone and CU, conditional use, request is, in our view and without challenge, a public health and safety issue. This is not a chess game to see who wins or loses. This is a serious matter for the protection of our lakes, our rivers, our streams, our wells, our wetlands, our groundwater, air quality, food-based products, future quality growth, and protection of all the taxpaying residents and property owners in the town. The town board is asking you, the county board, each and every one of you, to vote in good conscience and in the norm by voting no to the WIGON zoning amendment and conditional use petitions. Thank you on behalf of the town board.
And thank you, you timed that well. Next is Mike Waller, with an Edgerton address, I assume in the town of Sumner. Mike Waller?
I haven't done a lot of research on this, but I am a scientist and it's almost always cheaper in the long run to not cause a problem rather than fix it after it's broke. So, it's the truly conservative thing to do, to just not break it in the first place. And there's got to be a smarter way to do this than to put an open pit a mile away from a lake. I mean, seriously, a mile away from a lake. So, that's all I've got to say. I'll keep it brief.
Thank you. Next is Anita Martin from Lake Mills on county board rules.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Committee structure was on the agenda at the last county executive committee meeting. The idea of combining two committees, the University Extension Education Committee and the Land and Water Conservation Committee, was raised. One of the county board supervisors attending the November Executive Committee meeting pointed out, neither committee has taken up the subject yet on their meeting agendas. Another elected official said some county board members do not want to consider combining committees because they would lose per diem payments as a result of having fewer committee meetings to attend. It's important to note, the county website contains a document titled, "County Board Per Diem Cost." It lists annual salary as well as meeting fees for the past seven years. The meeting fees have gone down from a total of $101,010 in 2011 to $76,640 in 2018, which is more than a 20% reduction. It also appears that the meeting fees are not over budget at this time. There is much work facing both the University Extension Education Committee and the Land and Water Committee, including the update of the 10-year Jefferson County Land and Water Resources Management Plan slated for completion during the latter part of 2020. Please look at what's driving the bus on this issue. Would it make more sense to put the subject of possible combinations of the two, combining of the two committees on the agenda for both committees to have each of those committees individually consider these, this subject before plunging forward with plans? Thank you for your consideration regarding this matter.
Thank you. Next is Barb McGann from, with an Edgerton address, again, I assume it's from the town of Sumner.
Yes, we have a mailing address that's in Edgerton, but we don't live.
Yeah, we know how that works.
Okay, mine is going to be short and simple. We've been out getting petitions and people signing it. At this point, we're up to around 70 people and we have no intentions of stopping on this issue until we hit everybody in the town. And I mean, everybody. So, you know that this is not a small group of people, a small disgruntled group of people or little old ladies or something like that who are against this. There are a lot of people who are against having this toxic pit. They're not against the business that you have already and that you operate to great effect and to, obviously, a fairly good financial living. Just the expansion and having an open pit, 140 feet by 100 feet by 10 feet deep with no cover on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sam Myers, again with an Edgerton address, assuming from the town of Sumner. Sam Myers?
Good evening. My name's Sam Myers and I live on 106 in Jefferson County with an Edgerton address. Just the way it is. On our other farm, for the last 40 years, we have been injecting waste products, all covered by the DNR, both human waste, food waste, and, well, mostly human waste and food waste. We have not had any problem. We sit on top of a marsh and the marsh, marsh has never shown any problems. In fact, it's grown quite well this year. But I think that the people have to start minding their own business. That is Mr. Waggins's business and it's all DNR permitted. He does not need any help from the rest of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Cindy Hamra Incha from Fort Atkinson address, I assume the town of Sumner. Is that correct?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. I wanted to take a minute, there's a lot of neighbors on one side, a lot of neighbors on the other side, and just take a minute to ask the board to use their common sense and good judgment. Look at the facts, look at the information from the DNR, and consider that the town is under obligations. Everyone who lives in the township has some kind of septic system, some kind of holding system. We're under a county board obligation, a county ordinance obligation to have those systems pumped. We have our own holding tanks in every one of our yards. They're only checked once every three years when they're pumped by the service provider. What's being considered here is something that's a DNR-approved, DNR-regulated, and checked and held to very, very high standards. I understand that people have concerns about health issues, but that's not based on any facts or any information that I've seen or been provided. I find it interesting that people come up and say, "I've got 70 signatures on that toxic pit." That's the term she used, toxic pit. That's a DNR, state-approved system that everyone in our township has to use in some capacity every three years, under the obligation of the county. And that's adopting a state statute. If we don't have these service providers in our area, we're going to pay more, we're going to have problems. The service that they're talking about is for the winter months when they can't take the waste to Fort, to go through the sewage process there. What's going to happen in three years when all of us residents have to have our septic pumped and there's no service providers in our area? I'm not saying I'm for it, I'm not saying I'm against it, but look at the facts and the figures and disregard what's not facts and figures. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bruce Stuffus, Highway 106, Fort Atkinson.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Just like to say, I live a half a mile from where this pit's going to go in, on the northeast side of the road. Pretty prominent taxpayer in the district. Have a very nice house, so I'd like to know how many of you supervisors would like to live next to this thing? Has any of you been up by Watertown, by the United Waste Plant where they have these big pits? Has anybody smelt that? Have we even contacted them homeowners to see what they think of it? What do you think happens to their property values? Not only their wells, I mean, I don't even know if this, what this is going to do to my wells. Our soil is very light by us. It's very sandy, so you pump this kind of volume into the ground, nobody's going to tell me it ain't getting into the groundwater. So I'd just like you guys to consider the rest of us that live in the town of Sumner and not just one family. We all pay taxes, we all have to live there. I mean, how many of you would go live next to a wastewater treatment plant? Would you build a new house there and live there? None of us would. Now we're having this brought to us. Here it is, deal with it. What happens? What happens to my taxes? I got my tax bill the other day, I'm going to pay $7,600 in taxes. What's my house going to be worth? Like they said, you go outside, you want to have a cookout, your friends come over. You got flies landing on your burger. Half a mile away, there's a human waste pit. Sound pretty edible to you guys? Just think about the rest of us in the township, please.
Thank you. Next, Lindsey Gillick, Schwammer Road, Fort Atkinson. Hope I got that right.
Good evening. My name's Lindsey Gillick, I'm the daughter of France and my husband and I have been running Valia for about five and a half years now. What we're trying to do is, we're just trying to expand our business and run it in, and, you know, try to make it, make it a livelihood for us as a family. So, all I'm asking is for you guys to help us out. We've tried following... We've tried following all the laws and all the rules that's possible, and I feel like we've done everything we've can to possibly get this in, and try to expand our business, and try to better ourselves as a family and as a business, and we don't want to get huge. The one that Bruce is talking about in United is three times, four times, way bigger than we are ever going to be. They got 80 trucks, we have, we have three. So, and the outfit they have over there is huge. 1.3 sounds really, really like a big number, but it's really not that big. I mean, Hostel's pit, it's a farm pit, it's 5 million gallons. So we're a quarter of the size of that. We're just going to use the, the stuff, or the pit in the winter months to, so that we don't have to take everything to the treatment plant, so it'll lower our costs, our disposal costs. In the spring, in the summer, we would incorporate it into our farm fields and use it as liquid fertilizer. So we're trying to use it as a farming operation as well. We just want to better ourselves and our families. That's all I got.
Thank you. Next is France Wagden. And I hope I got that right.
I'm Franz Waggen, W-7755, Highway 106, West Fort Atkinson. And I'm the owner, or going to be the owner of the pit. They call it a pit, I call it a holding tank. We've been in business for 25 years, septic business. I farmed all my life, been on that farm for over 50 years. It's going to be injected into the ground, relatively small tank. Bruce before told me he wouldn't mind if we put a 500 cow dairy out there. If he had a 500 cow dairy, he would be jumping over the moon, believe me. He doesn't know what he's talking about, when he's talking about such a small volume here compared to a 500 cow dairy. He must think I'm stupid or something. I can't figure it out. We abide, we abide by all the DNR rules. We're doing everything that we were talked to. It took us a year and a half to get the permit through the DNR. Like Lindsey said, we're just trying to better our business, make it more efficient. We're going to use it as a fertilizer, cut back on some of the purchased fertilizer, some of the commercial fertilizer, go a little more organic. I mean, people here are all talking organic, now we're trying to do it, and now we're getting kicked around for being organic. We're doing everything by the book. We're not pulling any punches here. We're just trying to better our business and make it more efficient. And when you're farming, you've got to be as efficient as you can get, otherwise you're going to be a ex-farmer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Ryan Cardinal from Lake Geneva.
Thanks, I'm Ryan Cardinal, I'm the design engineer on the, on the Valia Holding Tank Pit. Just real briefly, I just wanted to, there's a lot of fear around these kinds of projects, and I just want to remind that Wagons already are operating under a heavily regulated DNR land application permit that's already happening regardless of the outcome of this project that will continue, land application will continue to happen, and has been for 20 years. And, and so, a lot of those fears are brought up at these kinds of meetings, and I just want to remind that this is only about the holding tank and that decision. So, again, heavily regulated by DNR, heavily regulated in terms of groundwater and other testing things that we've discussed at the committee and town levels. So, I just wanted to remind everybody of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final registrant for this evening is Frankie Fuller.
Hi, thank you very much. I just need 30 seconds to say that I am a customer of Franz's, and I would be perfectly willing to pay a higher price for his services if that would help with hauling or making the holding tank a little safer, the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this evening. I want to thank those who came out, and for respecting our, our time limits. It's very much appreciated. Next, we, as previously agreed, we're going to jump ahead to the Planning and Zoning Committee Report, with the report on approval of petitions. And then I think we'll, we'll just, we'll stop at that, and then we'll go through the others one by one, if that's okay with the Chair.
Report to Honorable Members, Jefferson County Board of Supervisors, Jefferson County Planning and Zoning Committee, having considered petition to amend the official zoning map, Jefferson County filed for public hearing held on September 19th and November 21st, 2019, as required by law pursuant to Wisconsin statutes. Notice thereof having been given and being duly advised, the wishes of the Town Boards in person to areas affected hereby makes the following recommendations, approval of petitions as listed below, dated this 25th day of November 2019, Blaine Paulson, Secretary.
Hey, we'll now go to the ordinance amending the official zoning map, which would include the issue where we have considerable interest this evening. This would be ordinance number what?
12.
Ordinance number 201912, is the approval of our zoning petitions, I shall move to approve as printed. Moved and seconded to approve the amendments to the zoning ordinance as printed. Let me back up a second. Before we go to discussion, I think it might be helpful because the recommendation of the zoning committee was to approve specifically on the petition having to do with this septic holding facility. And my understanding is that the decision of the zoning committee was based in part on advice of legal counsel, so I'd like to give our legal counsel who sits beside the Chair here the opportunity to explain.
If you're not on page 12 of your agenda packet, please turn to page 12. That's the ordinance that we're looking at right now. The second paragraph, starting whereas, makes a reference to petition R-4179A-19. That's petition filed by Franz and Vicky Waggen. I think it would be helpful to the County Board to get some context for what's happening here and what the public comment is about. 99% of the speakers were talking about an issue, and I know what the issue is, and a few of us in this room do, but not everyone does, or at least not everyone did prior to the, the meeting. And you started hearing comments, and it appeared to me that the speakers were making the assumption that everyone knew exactly what they were talking about. And even if you read the packet and you read the ordinance, there's a lot more to be discussed to give the County Board context of how we got here today. And that's what I'm going to talk a little bit about. The owners of a parcel of property in the town of Sumner, the Wagons filed petition with Jefferson County to rezone a parcel of property that they own. They're currently conducting business on their land spreading waste. They wanted to expand it. They're zoned A1. County can't grant their permission as requested in an A1 zoning classification. The way to do that is to rezone it to A2. And an A2 zoning classification allows the type of operations that they want to operate, they want to expand their business, to have a 1.3 million gallon holding tank for waste. Currently, they don't have a holding tank. That petition was filed and forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Committee for action. Prior to that, it was forwarded to the town of Sumner Board to consider, the town of Sumner Board made a, made a recommendation back in July to Jefferson County Planning and Zoning, saying they don't approve of the rezoning classification, they don't approve of the use that the Wagons want to put their property to. Now, the Planning and Zoning Committee considered that, had a meeting one time, and then forwarded back to the town for further consideration to see if there could be some resolution to avoid something like we see tonight. That didn't happen. So, in September, Planning and Zoning Committee considered the petition to rezone to A2, and considered the conditional use permit that would be part of that if they wanted to conduct operations. And on October, excuse me, November 25th, Planning and Zoning Committee voted 5 to 0 to approve the rezoning classification A2, to authorize the business proposed by the petitioners, and also granted their conditional use permit. So that's where we are today. And it's the job of the planning, excuse me, it's the job of the County Board to review, approve, deny, or send back rezoning petitions to the Planning and Zoning Committee. It happens every County Board meeting, normally we don't have this much attention to a rezoning. But the options that the County Board has today is to either approve as presented, to rezone to A2, send it back to the Planning and Zoning Committee with directions to make changes of whatever type the Board felt would be appropriate, or simply deny the rezoning petition. Now, there's also reference to a conditional use permit by some of the speakers. That's not something before the County Board tonight, just the rezoning. Should this parcel of property be rezoned from A1 to A2? And I was at the Planning and Zoning Committee meetings, Matt Zangle here, our Planning and Zoning Director, present to answer additional questions. Considerations of whether or not the zoning should be regranted, should be granted, there's a farmland preservation, farmland preservation policy ordinance that was considered. There are a number of other factors considered by the Planning and Zoning Committee, and we can talk about those in detail. I'd be happy to go through with the Board one by one, but the, the Committee considered all relevant factors, and it's my opinion that the Planning and Zoning Committee properly found that a rezoning was appropriate in this case, and properly forwarded to the County Board of Supervisors for action. And I would also support that this, this Board, the County Board can approve the rezoning legally because it is consistent with the farm, farm use plan in Jefferson County, as well as Jefferson County ordinances.
Thank you. Now, open for discussion, and Supervisor Nass is the person who advanced, the supervisor who advanced the amendment. You have the floor first, and then Supervisor Christensen.
Blair, could you address the, the towns' options yet?
I can, yes. The town, I told you initially that the town expressed its desire not to have this, this petition approved by the Planning and Zoning Committee. That recommendation was not followed. So, if the County Board approves the petition for rezoning, the town has 40 days to essentially veto it. Statutes say disapprove, they have 40 days to disapprove the petition for rezoning. So, you've heard a lot of public comment, basically saying, "Don't do this to us," but if the town doesn't like it, they, they have control. They have ultimate control on if this rezoning takes effect.
Thank you. Supervisor Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to say a few words on this same issue, and I'd like to say those because District 30 includes all of the town of Sumner. And so, I've had a, a number of conversations on this topic with people who've called from the town of Sumner, and expressed concerns. My main point that I want to make, I'll go right to that because our Corporation Counsel has covered most of the details that I was going to mention. So those are understood now, people, by people in the room. But what I want to say is, the residents' concerns are appreciated and welcome in the county, both for and against this proposal, and any proposal that comes before. We like to get public input. The concerns of the residents that were expressed about water quality, surface and groundwater, possible contamination, and air quality especially, those are issues that are addressed by the work of outside agencies, not agencies inside the, the county government. They would be, for instance, State of Wisconsin's DNR for water, or federally, it would be the EPA for air quality, and so on. That's the place, those are the agencies that, that do the enforcement work regarding those. I want you to know how I plan to vote, and the reason, and the reason I'm going to vote. I'm going to vote to approve, in favor of approval of this petition. And the reason is, I didn't attend every meeting, and I have never served on the zoning committee. I know that the zoning committee members are hardworking, and they did their due diligence on this job and this topic as they always do. And so, I do not want to act in, contrary to their decision, because I trust their decision. I have over the years, and generally, that's the way things work in the committee system. So, finally, at the, I'll just reiterate that the input from county residents is considered. If there are way to act on it, the county may do that, but there really isn't a way to act on the concerns that were expressed, most of the concerns that were expressed. So thank you for that opportunity, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Further discussion. Supervisor Broglar, then Supervisor Kelly, please.
I have two questions. First, is there any precedence on this? And second, if the Town Board files petition within the 40 days and says no, does, do they have the final authority, or is it still in the hands of the county zoning?
Appears to be directed to the Corporation Counsel.
I'll answer the last question first. If the town disapproves the rezoning, that's the end of it, then the rezoning doesn't happen. Then it's over with. I suppose in theory, a petitioner or landowner could file a new petition with the county, but they could keep on going around and around, the town could continue to deny the petition. So, as I said, the town is the final authority, and they, they make that decision. And as far as, is, does this create precedence? Could you give me a little bit more explanation on what your question is referring to? Or is there a precedent, I think was your question?
Well, is there a precedent? My, my question is, there's always conflict between different levels of government, and I'm trying to see if there's been any history of this, or are we setting some sort of precedent?
No, I think we're following the law. I, I don't, I'm not concerned about any, any issues, any precedent. Each case is, is, is unique, it's different, and, and the Planning and Zoning Committee, Planning and Zoning Committee considered the unique aspects of this case when it made its decision. So, I have no concerns about that.
Thank you. Supervisor Kelly, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really appreciated the explanation from Corporate Counsel, not particular on the zoning, but I was a little confused on the status of the conditional use. Could you?
Again, Corporation Counsel, please.
In order for the proposed use to take place, two things have to happen. The property has to be rezoned from A1 to A2, that's why we're here tonight. Second thing that has to happen is that they have to receive a conditional use permit by the county. Now, the Planning and Zoning Committee already granted the conditional use permit, subject to the approval tonight. So, those are the two parts of it. Does it answer your question, Supervisor Kelly?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Schultz, please.
Just, just a quick question. When it comes to this kind of issue, there are a lot of environmental regulations out there, mainly from the state, except, are we comfortable that the Wagons have met all of the regulations of the DNR and the State of Wisconsin for environmental issues?
Should we give that question to the Planning and Zoning Director? Mr. Zangle, please.
The short answer is yes. The Wagons currently operate under a DNR permit for the land spreading, which I spoke with DNR earlier this week, and they're currently in compliance with the land spreading. On July 17th of this year, the DNR conditionally approved the 1.37 million gallon septic tank, conditionally approved based on, or waiting, pending county approval for the zoning status of it. If approved, and if the zoning is approved, the petitioner will then need a full permit from DNR, so, yes.
Thank you. Further discussion. Is there a request for, Supervisor Broglar, please?
Request to divide the question.
We could divide the question. Options for Board members are to divide the question, ultimately ask for a roll call vote. Those are all options available from the floor. Maybe we should start with your suggestion, Supervisor Broglar, it's appreciated. Would anybody like to divide the question, so that we take up this particular matter of the application in the town of Sumner separately? Is there a motion to divide the question? Supervisor Morse, please.
I'll move to divide the question.
Moved and seconded to divide the question, and now I'll turn to Corporation Counsel. Is that debatable?
Non-debatable motion.
Thank you. It's a non-debatable motion, so we'll take the vote on whether or not to divide the question. A yes vote means that we will take up the question of the proposed rezoning in the town of Sumner separately from the rest of the amendments to the zoning ordinance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The result is inconclusive, and, and the opinion of the Chair, we'll have a roll call vote, please. Again, a yes vote means that you want to divide the question. Roll call vote, please.
Votes are locked. We have 19 yes, 10 no, and one absent.
So the question is divided. So, now we're back to the main motion, which is whether or not to approve the rezoning. So now we're back to the main motion, which is whether or not to approve the rezoning for the proposed rezoning in the town of Sumner. Do I need to reference the number?
I recommend that you do.
Let's see why, I'll get that number. Everybody understand what we're voting on? Again, the question is whether or not to approve or deny the rezoning. Would anybody like a roll call vote? Okay, we'll try a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the zoning, rezoning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The rezoning is approved. Now we go to the rest of the items to amend the zoning ordinance as printed. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Zoning ordinance is amended. And we'll continue with the business of the Planning and Zoning Committee. Originally, Item 15C, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2019-05 to remove the requirement that rezoning is conditioned on recording a certified survey map. Supervisor Nass, please.
Ordinance number 2019-20, amending the ordinance number 2019-05 to remove the requirement that rezoning is conditional, a condition on recording a certified survey map. I move for the adoption of this, of this ordinance as printed, and I'll give you a brief explanation. We found that not everybody needs to have a certified survey map. We can still require it if we want, but there's certain ones that don't. So we don't want people to have to go through that expense when it's not necessary.
Very good. We're going to make it easier for people when we can.
Take care of you guys.
Okay, presumably. Discussion on the amendment to the zoning ordinance. Supervisor Brogler, please.
Just to note, I think it's ordinance number 13, not 20.
Oh, I thought it was 19 was the last one. Oh, 12, sorry.
Okay, so it's ordinance number 2019-13. Further discussion? All in favor of amending the ordinance has moved, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ordinance is amended. Now to 15D, amending ordinance number 2019-03 to remove the requirement that rezoning is conditioned on recording a certified survey map. Seems redundant?
Yes.
It's slightly different, though. Okay, Supervisor Nass, please.
14. Order 2019-14, amend the zoning ordinance number 2019-03, the last one was 05, to remove the requirement rezoning is conditional, is conditioned on recording a certified survey map, and the reasons are the same on this one. It's just part of a different portion of the ordinance. Move for the adoption of this ordinance as printed.
Is there a second? Moved in second to amend ordinance number 2019-03 to remove the requirement that rezoning is conditioned on recording a certified survey map. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ordinance is amended. Now, also from the Planning and Zoning Committee, a resolution authorizing contract with Ayers and Associates Incorporated for ortho imagery of Jefferson County. Supervisor Nass, please.
First resolution of the evening, where are we at? 53, okay. Ordinance, excuse me, Resolution 2019-53, authorizing contract Ayers and Associates for ortho imagery of Jefferson County. An executive summary is ortho imagery is digital aerial photography used for mapping, planning, zoning, land and water conservation, parks, public safety, and other government functions throughout Jefferson County. Jefferson County participates in Wisconsin Regional Ortho Imagery Consortium, which publishes a request for qualifications to provide ortho imagery and then performs a quality-based selection process. After review, it was determined Ayers Associates, Inc., partnering with Quantum Spatial, was a most qualified consultant. Wisconsin Regional Ortho Imagery Consortium has a long history of sponsoring ortho imagery projects with 2020 being the fifth project on a five-year cycle. Counties that participate in the Wisconsin Regional Ortho Imagery Consortium receive partner cost sharing to help offset the cost of the project. The goal of Wisconsin County, or the Jefferson County Land Information Plan adopted September 13, 2018, is to routinely update the county's ortho imagery, with the next update occurring in 2020. The Land Information Council met on June 19, 2019, and recommended approval of the 2020 Land Information Budget, Program Budget, which includes funding of a 2020 ortho imagery project. The Planning and Zoning Committee met on November 25, 2019, and recommended forwarding this resolution to the county board for approval to contract Ayers and Associates, Inc., to provide consulting services and require, and acquire new ortho imagery of Jefferson County. Fiscal note, the non-tax levy land information program is funded in part by land information program retained fees that are collected from recorded documents, the register of deeds, and a strategic initiative grant. Funds of up to $46,560 have been allocated to account note, the account number as listed here in, in the 2020 Land Information Program Budget. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Moved in second to authorize contract with Ayers and Associates Incorporated for ortho imagery of Jefferson County. Roll call vote, please.
We have 29 ayes, 0 no, and 1 absent.
Resolution is adopted. Finally, from the Planning and Zoning Committee, resolution amending the contract with Ayers and Associates Incorporated for LiDAR digital terrain mapping. Supervisor Nass, please.
Resolution 2019-54. Executive summary, digital terrain modeling, also known as digital elevation modeling, is a practice for creating a digital representation of a topography of the land is utilized by numerous Jefferson County departments, along with local, state, and federal agencies for a variety of land-related projects and programs. These projects and programs include flood mitigation, land development, conservation planning, park development, transportation planning, ordinance enforcement, and stormwater management. Advances in light detection and ranging, or LiDAR technology, has been, has resulted in the ability to significantly improve the accuracy of the current digital terrain model that is, that was last updated in 2012, and further expand uses in Jefferson County. Five Wisconsin counties received grant funding after submitting a joint grant application. Upon approval of this grant, Ayers and Associates offered to provide the necessary updates to Jefferson County's digital terrain model as part of the cooperative group purchased by the five Wisconsin counties receiving grant funding. Jefferson County staff has determined Ayers and Associates is best qualified vendor to provide the service for Jefferson County. The Jefferson County Board of Supervisors approved the Resolution 2018-74 authorizing the county administrator to enter into the contract with Ayers and Associates, Inc. It's been determined that amending the contract with Ayers and Associates, Inc., will provide the county with a cost-effective method of obtaining additional data to update the county's light, light detection and ranging, or LiDAR technology. The Planning and Zoning Committee met on November 25, 2019, and recommended forwarding this resolution to county board for approval to amend the contract with Ayers Associates, Inc., to provide additional services related to, related to the 2019 LiDAR terrain mapping project at a cost of $35,300. Fiscal note, the non-tax levy land information program is funded in part by land information program fees that are collected from recorded documents, register of deeds, and strategic initiative grant. Funds up to $34,300 have been allocated to account number as listed in the 2020 Land Information Program Budget. I move for the adoption of this resolution as printed.
Moved in second to amend the contract with Ayers Associates Incorporated for LiDAR digital terrain mapping. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The resolution is adopted. Now we'll go back to our regular order, which takes us to number nine on the printed agenda. Special Order of Business, presentation on countywide communication project. Mr. Weimeyer, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So our last Law Enforcement Committee meeting, when we reviewed the results of the bids for the communication project, I was asked to put together a presentation, really to bring us through the history, where we're at today, and kind of tell the whole story as a reminder of what the journey this has been the last year plus as we've gone through this. So we put together a little presentation. We're going to try a little audio. We'll see if that works for us, Todd, and then we'll go from there. So a reminder of the brief history, beginning in 2018, we began to identify that the system needed to have a significant upgrade, and that's when we started looking at the five-year capital budget plan, some of the needs of the system, and having conversation with our agency partners to utilize the system, to ensure we had a proper system for our first responders and other stakeholders within the system. That's when we initially began to put this into the budget for subsequent years to include over $1 million in 2019. As part of that process, the decision was made that besides just spending the money right away, is that we wanted to bring a consultant in to help us review the system. So the county issued an RFP in August of 2018 to ask for vendors to assist us with evaluation of the city and provide recommendations based on the results of that study. We chose E-LERT and Associates was hired, and they moved forward with their study. In April, April 16, 2019, the results of that analysis was presented. In the afternoon, they presented to our municipalities, our stakeholders, included fire departments, EMS, law enforcement, along with municipal leaders were also invited to the out briefing. That was a significant time. I know you all had the presentation later that evening. That was the shortened version by quite a bit. But in essence, though, we started looking at what options should we have as we look at to the future for our communication system. As we look at this, this is not just a five-year investment. This needs to be a 20-year investment. It needs to be a system that can be maintained, it can be expandable, and utilize newer technologies down the line. The results were three potential types of systems. The first was a new VHF analog radio communications. That is, in essence, what we have today, and we're going to show what that kind of looks like. Our second option, and the one that's being recommended, is to look at what's called a VHF P25 digital communication system, using more of that microwave digital technology that we have. And then the other one was a P25 800 megahertz. Oftentimes, you hear it's called like a trunking system, is sometimes a lingo that I've developed the last year, but that's kind of what that is, and that's a much more robust system. Specifically, you'll find this a lot in the urban areas for penetration of bigger buildings, so like Milwaukee as an example. So as I said, the last bullet is due to the product costs and the current and future needs of the county, the recommendation was proceed forward with the VHP25 digital system. So this is kind of why we did this. It's a, it's a digital standard, and Todd could probably take a lot of time to explain our communication supervisor, what is this P25 digital standard system? One thing when we entered this project that we want to be very cognizant of is make sure what we call as an open system. We wanted to ensure not only the sheriff's department had options, but all the agencies had options of what kind of equipment they would utilize on the system. So it would be just brand-specific. And this P25 communication system, digital system, opened it up that that would be available to us. As I said, this is a national standard, and if you want a thesis statement, we can put you in touch with Todd. So the changes, and I kind of want to show this chart, and we're going to do, we're going to try some soundbites here in just a minute so you can hear the difference. So on the graph in the upper right, you'll see that curve that goes immediately down with the white space. That's the effective range of our current analog system. Then to the right of that, you see a longer horizontal line, and then more of a sharp cliff, but a longer spanned out. That's a capability when we switch to the digital system. And so when we start looking at the range of our systems, the ability and redundancy of our systems, these become important when we start talking about communications. So we're going to see if we can make this work. So hit the top speaker. So this is VHF analog.
Oak is strong and also gives shade. Open the crate, but don't break the glass. Move the vat over the hot fire.
So in essence, that blurb was a normal communication over a VHF system. Pretty, pretty normal, a little gurgly. Our next one now is what's called a fade, and this is when you start getting into buildings outside the range of the system.
No fade test. Oak is strong and always gives shade. Cats and dogs each hate the other. The fight begins to rust while.
That was not technical difficulties. That is what happens on our radio system. All right, now we're going to try it with our digital.
Oak is strong and also.
Okay, that breaking up was the system, not the real system.
Try it again.
Do it, try it one time.
It never works the way it's supposed to.
Digital testing, attempt for Dean DG. Oak is strong and also gives shade. Open the crate, but don't break the glass. Move the vat over the hot fire.
Okay, so you notice it's a little more clear, more gurgly tone. Now we'll do the fade in the bottom speakers, and this is probably where you see it the most noticeable.
Digital signal fade test. Oak is strong and always gives shade. Cats and dogs each hate the other. That's wild news.
So we don't have that gurgly sound that we.
Add the sum to the product, it'll be 3.
So we don't have that gurgly sound that we had before. Todd, is there anything we want to talk about the differences before I get too far?
The digital fade is what you're going to see when I stretch the system.
Could you, Todd, could you please come to the microphone?
Sorry, sorry. Sorry, my wife's loud, my wife tells me I talk too much. The digital fade is what you're going to hear, okay, if I take a squad car and I send them to Madison, that's obviously outside our system. So that's what he's going to sound like when he gets further away from the system. That's not the way the system is designed within the county. The analog fade is what we have in the county already. We have the fading. We have officers that walk, walk away or drive different places in the county, and they fade off. And we, lucky, we got dispatchers that got good ears. They can recognize voices and what's going on. But the digital, we won't have the digital, digital fade in the county, but you're going to have that when we transport, say we transport to Milwaukee, transport to Madison. Yeah, the further you get from the system, you're going to have the fading. When I personally travel, I can go up to Portage area, I can hear City of Whitewater. They're P25. They got a digital system. I can hear them. They probably can't hear me if I call them back, but I can hear them, but they're at that breaking point. That's how far the system stretches. So that's the difference. When you hear fading, the digital fade, that won't happen in the system within the county limits, or the way the system was designed by the, by the engineer. So that makes sense?
So I was just trying to make it a techie talk, quick explanation why, from a performance standpoint, why the recommendation is going with the P25 digital system.
So I don't think it was a very good example in this room, the difference between the two. The Law Enforcement and Emergency Management Committee heard both of those systems in the committee room. Supervisor Morse, Chair of the Emergency Management and Law Enforcement Committee, would you speak to that?
Yeah, there's a clear difference between the two, and like, like Todd said, the fade happens when you get outside the county. It doesn't happen inside the county. So it will definitely be a better, a better system in the county, and that's really what we're after. And we're not just after for our sheriffs, it's, we're talking everybody's on this, all the, all the fire departments, and any other of the municipality, you know, these are the stakeholders that want it.
Thank you. Mr. Weimeyer?
Thank you, sir. So after we made a decision to proceed forward with this specific system, we engaged E-LERT to continue on with the process, and that was specifically to develop an RFP for vendors, and some of the outcomes that we're looking for, for those vendors. So part of our project scope in the RFP was that we required 95% coverage and 95% redundancy. This is basically a best practice in the industry, and which is, which is, you should expect in a new system. This is going to be tested about half-mile square basis when we look at the end for completion. E-LERT asked for about 200 points from our agencies for areas across the county to test this out. 100 of those points were included in the RFP. Those would be part of the final testing as this takes place. And this is really geared towards equipment. And this is really geared towards equipment at our tower sites, and we'll get through what's in this quote and what's not in this quote, in a sec, a second. I told the seven vendors attended a mandatory walkthrough meeting, three actually provided bids that you'll see in the resolution. We had E-LERT provide a professional analysis of what took place, looking at the costing to make sure nothing was missed, also providing a recommendation of equipment that was being spec'd, to ensure we were as apples to apples as we could be in the end result. Per the RFP, we actually had a scoring criteria, so it was not just based on the cost, we looked at the 10-year maintenance cost, we looked at the ability to do the work, we looked at compliance with the RFP, we, I'll tell you, two of the vendors missed some coverage points in the county, so they actually had deductions of points, it's not the one that we're recommending tonight, but we knew that, what that also meant is probably additional equipment that would have to be purchased, which was not at bid price. We also brought other stakeholders, specifically the Chiefs Association, they gave us a few of their chiefs, specifically the chief from the City of Jefferson, the chief from City of Watertown, the assistant chief from Exonia, to help us in the analysis and scoring process from their viewpoints. And then finally, we ultimately presented this to the law enforcement committee, and we reviewed the full analysis from E-LERT, they got to see a copy of that, we went through the scoring criteria and some of the costing. So these are the bid results from the tab, and this is what's directly inside your resolution for tonight, and as you can see, General Communications by far had the most cost-effective response. And the Laura Letton and Cornet also annotate that they actually had the highest scoring points in comparison to the RFP results too, in our scoring metrics. So, what was not included, when we started looking at numbers, it's important as we look at a cost project, what's included and not included in the product scope. So tonight, we are not talking about civil engineering projects, so this is things such as shelters for the equipment, this is if we need to add or create new towers. This does not include some of the backup generators, because not all the sites have backup generators right now. This does not include agency radios, so all the agencies, that's outside the cost that you're seeing tonight. And then finally, this does not include what we're calling the owner's representative or project oversight. We'd like to continue our engagement, E-LERT specifically, to help us with the oversight, this would include helping us review the contract as we negotiated out, compliance from a design standpoint, oversight of construction process, and helping the final acceptance of the project and sign off. So our next steps, so the first one tonight is seeking authorization to enter into a contract and negotiations. We actually talked about this in the Finance Committee tonight. So this isn't a typical construction project. We have a rough design, preliminary design that was returned with all the proposals, but as I mentioned, we identified in two of the proposals, they did not cover or do the enhanced coverage that we were missing in Palmyra, Whitewater area, or Cambridge, Oakland area. General Communications included it in their bid package. It's almost like the concept called design-build. The winning vendor now must take the design to the next step for a final design to be reviewed to meet this outcome requirements. So it's a little bit different than our usual things, but that's what will happen. So that's where it goes, the final design and negotiations. I put broadband project here, so when we start talking, the broadband, we've talked before, is those civil engineering, the potential, and I want to stress potential, opportunity to co-locate towers if we'd win that bid, we had to grant, we'd have to work closely to see if that makes sense, but I think there's a possibility. We had to refine the product timeline, General Communications had a very aggressive timeline, and we'll see what the end result is so we can communicate that back out to our agencies of realistic expectation of that. And as part of that, we talked about that open system, we're gonna identify compatible systems to our, for our agencies that will work, and we know will work on this system. Then, once you have the final design, we can start looking at what we need to do for that civil work. So hypothetically, let's say we need to look for a new tower in Palmyra, for my friend, Mr. Paulson. We'd finalize the design, that would be looking at the height from a topography standpoint to wind bearing, all this other stuff they want to look at, what, how much equipment will go on there, those kind of things. We get a design, put it out to bid, and that'd be like a normal sealed bid public works project. And then we, as part of this also is working with partner agencies, these are everything that Supervisor Morris talked through in terms of law enforcement, EMS, fire. So, one thing we would like to look at doing, once we identify those compatible systems, is do a large RFP on behalf of all the agencies, to try to use economy skills to drive the best price possible for those radio systems. Once that's completed, we have talked about doing what we're calling a radio fair, we invite all those vendors to private fair park grounds as an example, because it's a nice central, big location, and let the vendors be there so the agencies can meet with those vendors, understand what the equipment they're offering, understand the price points, so they can make the best decisions for their agencies and their municipality. Then the other big thing we've talked a lot about is the ongoing maintenance and operational needs of the system. So when that initial report came and gave, was presented to the board in April, we talked a lot about the systems, but we also talked about the maintenance of individual equipment and the program of that equipment. And so in conversation with some of our stakeholders, we talked about, we want a standard operating procedure for our system, so that means it's a certified system, we know how it's programmed, and it's programmed with the right channels, and we know it's being maintained. That wasn't necessarily happening on our current system. And with the newer digital system, Todd and his folks will be able, they can touch those folks on the system and identify what's being used, so they'll be able to keep control of that. So part of this, we also want to look at doing a countywide maintenance agreement on behalf of all the municipalities, that still has to be explored, but especially with the Chiefs Association, when the sheriff and I met with them, there's definite support to look at that as we move ahead. So, what everyone wants to kind of see, when we presented those three options, there were some big price takes back in April, if you recall. The system that we're talking about was in the middle of that price range, I think if I recall from that sheet, it was approximately $9 million all in, that was an assumption that half that cost was roughly was for all brand-new radios for everybody across the county. So we're not including that part of our analysis, really focused on about 4.5 million was roughly what we're looking at for the system to come up. And lo and behold, we're pretty darned close to that. So the top part are the costs that you see in the RFP tonight for General Communications. We're estimating in the ballpark of another million dollars in civil work will need to take place, and we're using it as a placeholder. The owner's representative, that's kind of like project oversight that I talked about, it's not inexpensive, but if you think of a traditional construction project for an architectural engineer, think about 10% typically, right? We're not too far off of that number when we look at that number. And then we need contingency. As I discussed, this is almost a design-build concept, I'll be careful using that word because we're not supposed to technically use that in Wisconsin, but just a concept. But there's needs to be some fluctuation as the system is designed, and making sure we have the right equipment in place as we look ahead. So, the good thing is, for the most part, this is close to that initial number, as you will look at the resolution tonight, we're asking for, in the budget, we had $3 million towards this project, with the assume carryover $1 million from 2019, you'll see we're asking for about an extra half million dollars as part of that project tonight, to make sure we have enough money to cover this. A million dollars would be that cash we're forwarding, and the next month we'll start talking about the financing options for that other $3.5 million. So that's a quick overview of the communication. Todd or Sheriff, did I cover the main points that we needed to cover? Supervisor Morris, did I hit all the main points we talked about, we need to make sure we're covered?
Yes, I believe we did, so, questions? Supervisor Chris Stinson?
Thank you. This is based on my own sad experience when televisions changed over from analog to digital, I'm sitting in kind of a valley, I lost a lot of my stations. So I'm assuming that the height and frequency of the towers allows this digital signal to get the good corner-to-corner coverage that you're anticipating. Is that the important part of the towers?
I'll let the techie guy talk. Right now, our system has one transmit site here in Jefferson, one analog transmit site, that's all we have. The new system will have between nine and 11 sites throughout the county, so the signal will be there, we'll be, dispatch can hear officers in field units better, they'll be able to hear us much better, because we're going from one site transmit here in Jefferson to nine to 11, or 11 sites, depending on their final design comes out. Does that help?
Yes, and I'm assuming that overcomes the impediment of the hills.
Todd, so just a quick talk about the one site versus the 10 to 11 site for transmit, can you kind of talk how that impacts the redundancy and the improvement for redundancy this will have?
The proposal that we're looking at is from General Communications, their site has got built into it redundancy, if one site would go down, one side backs another one up. The other two proposals, if one site went down, it kind of messed with the other sites, that's one thing we looked at in the proposal from our engineer consultant. There is redundancy built in, if one, what's that, if one site goes down, another site builds on it. So it's built up that way. So it's stuff that the consultant looked at and found in the reports, and it's something he noted between the other two vendors that they could have, they had fail points in their proposals.
So keep in mind with those two comments between coverage and redundancy, 95, 95, that's the outcome they must achieve, 95% redundancy, 95% coverage of the county.
Further questions? Supervisor Kelly, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How many towers are we talking about building, have those sites been identified?
I think we're actually in decent place for the most part with towers, I know we're looking at a location in Palmyra for our needs. In the General Communications response, there's a proposal and pre-negot, well, a site identified as being on a US Cellular site, and I think internally, we've talked, we might think there's a better option to build new, because cost-effectively, that may be better long-term. We think the City of Jefferson site, that had been contemplated having to be a new tower, that'll have to go through the design, but that might need a new tower, but we might be alright there, I'm looking, Todd, make sure I'm on the same page still. And then the other site we've been looking at potentially, Waterloo, we have a newer tower, but it's shorter, I think we'll have to determine if that is sufficient for the height to meet those requirements. So, we're actually better off than we initially thought, so that number could come down. Again, and a tower is one of those things we talked about, is that co-location opportunity with some of the wireless internet providers potentially, and they've agreed to that. And I think General Communications, they've looked at sites in the Cambridge, Oakland area, and now in Whitewater have gotten creative with some of their relationships, that'll be, help with cost effectiveness to provide service and coverage down there too. Is that inaccurate?
Supervisor Canard, please.
I'm familiar with the site in Palmyra, the US Cellular, the old tower site, the old microwave tower site, isn't far from your existing tower. Is your existing tower not reusable, I guess it's there, it's been there for a long time?
The site you're referring to, the big microwave site there is owned by, it's a private office, they own tower sites throughout the nation, they buy those sites, and then they, you pay good money to be on those sites. Our site is in Camp Oak Ridge down there, when the consultant went through, he found that the base of the site was crumbling a little bit. That site would probably have to be replaced, that'd probably be about the only site being replaced. It's a good spot, it's on high ground, it does provide very good coverage where it is. In essence, I'd like to keep that site. It's hidden, you can't see it, but yet the coverage it provides is awesome.
So you would intend to rebuild in that area, on that site then?
Yeah, yes.
Painting final design.
Other questions? Other questions? Okay, that concludes that part of Special Order of Business. Do we want a break? Mr. Waymeyer might be able to enjoy a break, you've been talking a lot already. Can we take five, 10 minutes? Is that agreeable? Let's be back at 25 to 9, please be back in your seats at 25 to 9.
If you don't want to, that's fine. Then you get to talk to Supervisor Renard.
Item number 9B, update on county board topics of interest, you'll see that there's three bullet points there, Mr. Waymeyer, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So our last executive committee, there's several bigger topics that came up, and one came up in public comment tonight, and the thought process from the executive committee is we give an update to the whole county board, so they can understand where some certain things are at, and some of these are a call for assistance, quite honestly, as well. So we'll start with the first one, and that's the census that's coming up as we look ahead. So as you may recall, earlier this year, we passed a complete count committee, and in essence, our intent was trying to get a committee together, looking at various populations and geographical locations of the county, to help encourage turnout as part of the census, because so much of our federal dollars, some state dollars, other things are driven so much by the census. We use this all the time in various programs we do, looking at data in terms of demographics and trends that we're seeing, so it's just crucial. It's also crucial getting out the vote, not the vote, excuse me, getting people out to respond, because at the end of the day, this also saves money for all of us as taxpayers. If you respond by the phone, online, which is a new version this year, by the written form, that means someone does not have to come knock at your door, so part of this is the encouragement to do that. So our complete count resolution said we'll have a committee of nine to 15, a lot of discretion based on those who would help us out, would be appointed by the chair, and we pay mileage, but not per diem. And at the end of the day, once we form that committee, the Census Bureau would come out and actually train the committee of some of the duties and responsibilities, and then it'd have a liaison to help with recommendations as this goes ahead. Since that passage of the resolution, we've had not, a lot of folks expressed the interest of support, and so what we're asking as part of this conversation tonight, and we started getting from the executive committee, when we get to the next page, we'll talk about some of the populations we're looking at. If you know someone who'd be willing to help out, and help serve on the committee, and use their networks to advertise and promote the census, or they're looking for workers, by the way, too, that's the purpose of this committee, and to help really get into those areas. And we have three areas we're gonna talk through in a second that we need some support on specifically. As a side note, Wisconsin as a whole had a very high return rate in 2010, and Jefferson County was no difference. One thing is when the Census Bureau came to present to the executive committee, one thing she noticed in some areas, people take that going, that's what's gonna happen this time, and they forget work went into getting that turnout in 2010. And so just a reminder that this has to be kept out there as we look ahead. So these are some of the key milestones, we're already, they're already working hard, area offices are up and operational, they're already doing canvassing activities, checking addresses. Our land information department has been doing a lot of work with GIS and updating addresses to make sure they have the latest and greatest data to help them in that process, and you may have already seen folks out in the field looking at subdivisions. As we go into 2020, this is really when the counting begins, they start looking at the bigger facilities. Example is they'll have special things for the residence halls at UW-Whitewater or Marinatha to count the students. But ultimately, they're looking at April 1st as census day, and what that means is wherever you're living, that's where you should be counted. So if you're a student at UW-Whitewater, that's where you count, you don't count your home back over Madison, that's how the process works. So this is the timeline that we're looking at, and really that's why this, the end of this year, which is limited, and that first part of 2020 is gonna be crucial for this committee. So, this shouldn't not look new, but this is kind of some of the organizational ideas behind who should be included of a complete count committee. So obviously, we have the highest elected official from each segment kind of heads it up or starts it, and you have a liaison, and then traditional areas are involved, all the government bodies, so example is you'll see conversations of townships or cities, in many cases, they don't have the capacity to do it by themselves, so there's partnerships opportunities. Media, Mr. Sharp did a very nice article for us after the executive committee helping promote the importance of it, so good relations with media always helps. Education, obviously, we want to get this out to the school kids, one area that came out, kids under five are traditionally are not fully counted, that is an area that's often missed. So how do we get it out to the preschools, and how do we get out to the education system to make sure those kids are counted, and yes, you have a human being, it should be counted for our involvement. Community-based, so really focused on a lot of those, folks who do good work, have those networks, looking at grassroots organizations. Faith-based is huge, they have a lot of good results, so we're looking at those who have relationship with faith-based organizations to help get the message out that way, and a lot of times they also, that's a group that helps with underrepresented folks in the past too, faith-based organizations. Business chambers, and then recruiting, that's really focused on our career centers and how we get job trains, and that's going on already with our workforce development center. So this is just kind of a different graphic of pretty much what I just said. So, we're looking for a group of nine to 15, we need ideas, let Jim or myself know, we can help reach out, but we'd really like to get something going the first part of January, because I think it's probably unrealistic before the end of the year. because I think it's probably unrealistic before the end of the year. So I talked through a lot of this already in terms of regional coordinator. We kind of used it as a restart with the executive committee of the importance. But part of that, she gave some past data on, so there was a few tracks that we need to look at that were underrepresented last time, or a lower reporting rate, not significant, but enough that we, part of focus. So one is the city of Watertown, there's a downtown track that was not highly, did not respond as high as the other areas. Census track in the south part of Jefferson, also is the city in Jefferson. We talked, commented at the committee meeting, if you look at those census tracks, those happen to overlay with the opportunity zones that we've talked to you all about, which means it's a demographic item too, which is kind of an interesting correlation, so, but those are the two areas. Akashgonon area in the south part of Fort Atkinson, and then Palmyra track in that area. Yes, Mr. Paulson, Palmyra track. So we talked through the groups, we're really focusing on, veterans groups is another big one that we often need assistance on, making sure we're properly tracking our veterans as well. So we need recommendations. If you are willing to help out, or you know those who might be, please reach out. We'll try to get a meeting coordinated probably for that second week or so in January is probably our realistic start date. Any questions on the census?
Feed me some names, please. Any questions?
All right, county board rules. So this is for twofold. One, I want to talk, quickly talk process, because we do have some new board members. And second, talk about what's going on, so you can make sure you're getting your voices or opinions to the committee, and ultimately to the final county board. So at your table, Dais, we did print out, you should have the current copy of the county board rules, just so everyone has the latest and greatest, and they can read it at their leisure. But part of them bringing that forward is we're getting to that time of year that we normally begin to review the executive committee county board rules. What happens is they will make a recommendation typically for action at the March meeting, the last meeting of this current term, and they'll approve it. And then at the organizational meeting in April, the new, at the new term, the new board will review those rules again and vote on them again of how they're going to act. We bring this forward now because we're folk, there's two things that we're going to talk through that are action items for the executive committee, but they're also looking for ideas that if you feel there needs to be some rules changed to the board rules, this is the time to start bringing those forward. Based on those recommended changes or thought processes, we'd probably be presenting this in January, February, realistically February, of what those changes might be, so you have time to talk through it and consider it. So that's the process side of things. The two main changes that are being talked about are potential combination of committees. This is being proposed initially right now as a trial basis for one term to see how it works, pending approval. The two, there's four committees that are being recommended or to be explored down to two. One committee would combine the finance and the human resource committees. Part of that thought process is there's a lot of overlapping resolutions, action items that go to both committees right now. Part of it is because the two departments are supportive of looking at that combination. But the executive committee also realizes there's a lot of effort and work that goes in those two committees, so that's how they're making a recommendation of being seven members. And there's more that we present at the next executive committee, so give you a read ahead. The second one was the one that was discussed earlier, and that was looking at potential consolidation or combination of UW extension and the land and water. Now, part of the reason this was being looked at is right now, state law requires that two members of the land and water must serve on a UW extension committee and vice versa, basically. And so if that's already happening, the thought process brought forward was, does that make sense to combine? Since you already have two members that must serve on both. Again, open to debate, but that's some of the rationale that was behind that. So as I said, these are looking at being as a trial basis for 2020 into 2022. I guess one earlier I didn't put up here, that was briefly, briefly brought up, but I think it might come back, is talking about remote attendance, so think about that again. That was brought up last term when we redid the board rules. But is that possibly, we should be looking at remote attendance for either committee boards or this board? So actually, the door's open for other reviews, so that's why we gave you a copy of the current board rules, so you all have an opportunity to review, and then bring your ideas forward to the executive committee in person or contact those board members directly. Any questions on that?
Steve.
Just one comment, that if, if you, if you were looking for remote access to meetings, better sign your broadband letters.
Thank you for the plug, Mr. Nason.
Any other questions on the topic of board rules? If you have any thoughts, again, probably best addressed to a member of the executive committee, because that's a committee that will ultimately bring any proposed rules changes to the board as a whole.
Okay, so you know questions on that. The last thing, we want to make sure everyone's updated on, and we need some assistance here as well. Is the comprehensive plan and agricultural plan update? And kind of those next steps. So at your desk, we provided a one-page summary as well of what is going on. And we'll quickly talk through work to date and some of the next steps that are happening. So first thing is we've had three steering committee meetings to date. We just finished the last one up about two weeks ago, three weeks ago now. We took a different tact with that steering committee, we actually split it into two, and that dialogue worked extremely well. We had a lot of great input insight, both from committee members and members of the public to help us form, looking at focus groups. We had our four regional meetings, we've had intergovernmental interviews. Every single township, every single municipality was interviewed. We got some great feedback as we looked to the future of how this plan can work with them, and there's some interesting commentary on it. And obviously, we also did our online surveys, that was something we really tried to push out there and plug. And we review the data not only for the outcomes, we also look from the response rates and what areas that were in line with our population, what areas that we need to look at to get more feedback into our plan. So part of this process in the last month is we really want to get, how do we communicate what is going on? So Matt and the consultant are working close with Tammy in my office, working on communication to the public, so we're looking at the utilization of Facebook more and more, of plans update. If you haven't been on our website lately, we actually have a link now, a project website off of our webpage. There's a variety of things in there, so everything from survey results to what happened at the steering committees, to the survey results from the communities, and as new paper comes forward, that project page will be updated. So that's a great resource from the public, for members of the board, to kind of keep, keep track of what we're trying to do within this process. So part of our next steps is we, the last steering committee started looking at goals and identify issues and opportunities, and those are the basis for some of our focus groups. So these focus groups are identified as some of those areas, where do we need a deeper dive? So example is we looked at some demographic or underrepresented areas. So one was younger people. Their survey was definitely age fifty and older, were very heavily responsive. We didn't have much under that, okay? So we're looking at how do we engage the folks in essence, in many's opinion, this plan is being developed for. Those are probably in their twenties and thirties, we're looking at being here twenty years later. So how do we engage those folks? Hispanic Latino population, it's a growing population in our, in Jefferson County. It was underrepresented in survey results in some of our public meetings. So we look at engagement processes for that portion of the population as well. But as you will see, we also looked at other items related to it. So what we're looking at is our next round of focus groups will take place shortly. As you'll see in the bottom, and we'll email this out, there's a link just for the county board. We would like you to rank these items, and I'll show you those focus group items in just a minute, but rank the top five you'd like to see focus groups on. Or did we miss a focus group? When the steering committee and the public met, did they miss something that should be a focus group? Please put it in there. There's also a section there to fill, volunteers who serve on these focus groups. Okay? Following those focus groups, there are going to be a couple more rounds of regional meetings, open houses, and then we're on track to hopefully have this done by the end of 2020, but we'll see how that goes. So these are the main focus group areas you see at the bottom of your page. So these are the areas that we came up with based on the feedback from the surveys, the regional meetings, and the input from the steering committee, looking at issues and goals. We'll take a look at those. If you have ideas, please do the survey. We're asking that be done by the end of this week. We're asking the steering committee to do the same thing right now, and we'll take those results back, and then we'll identify which focus groups will take place. Matt and I have talked, in some cases, we may have the consultants do certain ones, and then we may have staff do other ones as well. We've had some community supporters willing to help host some of these focus groups too, which is great to encourage participation. So that's where we're at right now for the comp plan. The best thing I would say is continue to pay attention to the agendas as they're posted and at project site, and continue to be engaged with us.
Thank you, Mr. Waymeyer. As I put in my pitch, a comprehensive plan is a plan. As you heard, much of the feedback we've received to date has been from people age fifty and plus, and the plan is not for people, old people like me. I can pick on Supervisor White, it's for young people and younger people than Supervisor White. So it's really important that we get input from those folks, because the plan is for them and their children and grandchildren and beyond. So please, if you have ideas, let us know. Okay, now we go to Building and Grounds Committee. With a resolution accepting bid from Jefferson Glass to replace all interior glass in the county jail. Supervisor Payne, please.
Resolution number 201955? Executive summary. In August of 2019, several maintenance issues were identified in the jail, with one being the need to replace glass windows and partitions. The current glass windows and partitions were installed when the jail was constructed in 1991. The glass is a triple paned system with tinted panes to provide appropriate monitoring of inmates while maintaining their privacy. The glass has begun to deteriorate, reducing the ability to properly monitor inmates and creating concerns about the structural integrity of the glass. On September 10th, 2019, the Finance Committee authorized the use of contingency funds and jail assessment funds to pay for this project. A request for proposal was published soliciting bids for the removal and replacement of approximately 100 glass windows and partitions at the county jail. The county received one bid for the project. The Buildings and Grounds Committee considered the bid at its meeting on December 4th, 2019, and recommended forwarding this resolution to the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors to accept the bid of Jefferson Glass as the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $63,700. Fiscal note. Adequate funds for this project are in the 2019's central services budget. However, since Jefferson County had previously budgeted $54,000 for this project, $10,000 of the amount previously allocated to the jail plumbing project of $146,200 will be allocated to the replacement of interior glass in the, in the jail. I move for approval of this resolution.
Moving in second to accept the bid from Jefferson Glass to replace all interior glass in the county jail. Discussion. We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Votes are locked. We have 29 yes, zero no, and one absent.
Resolution is adopted. Now to the executive committee with a resolution authorizing to enter into a joint development agreement with Badger State Solar to operate a solar photovoltaic electrical generating facility. Supervisor Canard, please.
Resolution number 201956. Badger State Solar LLC desires to develop, construct, and operate an up to 149 megawatt solar photovoltaic electrical generating facility with necessary associated facilities such as underground power, collection lines, access roads, operating and maintenance facilities, electrical substations, and overhead transmission line connections in Jefferson County, which includes Jefferson Township and Oakland Township. Because this project is over 100 megawatts, the Wisconsin Public Service Commission has full jurisdiction over the project, and as such, there is limited local authority to regulate this project. However, Badger State Solar has agreed to enter into a joint development agreement with Jefferson County, the Town of Jefferson, and the Town of Oakland that addresses impacts to the townships of Jefferson and Oakland operated or created by operation of a solar photovoltaic electrical generating facility. This joint development agreement was negotiated with input from the Planning and Zoning Committee, which included public comment, as well as input from both townships. Items addressed in the joint development agreement include setback, plan review, transportation impact, drainage impact, vegetation management, noise parameters, land use studies, revenue, and fiscal impacts. The agreement was presented to the Jefferson County Board on October 22nd, 2019 for purposes of review and discussion. The executive committee reviewed and accepted additional public input on the proposed agreement on October 30, 2019, which provided guidance to staff on negotiating certain provisions in the agreement with Badger State Solar. On November 27, 2019, the executive committee considered this resolution and the attached joint development agreement, and recommended forwarding to the county board to authorize the county administrator to enter into a joint development agreement with Badger State Solar to operate a solar photovoltaic electrical generating facility in Jefferson County. Okay, wait. There's a fiscal note, and I got all my pages confused here. Oh, here it is. Jefferson County and the towns of Jefferson and Oakland will no longer receive tax revenue on the land used for operation of the solar photovoltaic electrical generating facility, but will receive payments in lieu of taxes from the state of Wisconsin, which will exceed the amount of lost tax revenue. I move for approval of this resolution.
Moving in second to authorize to enter into a joint development agreement with Badger State Solar to operate a solar photovoltaic electrical generating facility. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Resolution is adopted. Next from the executive committee, a resolution entering into an agreement with Rock River Community Clinic Incorporated and adjusting the 2020 budget to reallocate funds. Supervisor Canard, please.
Just a, sorry. Jefferson County, or, a resolution number 201957. Jefferson County currently has three healthcare providers providing primary health and dental care for uninsured and underinsured residents of Jefferson and Dodge counties. These providers are the Community Dental Clinic for Fort Atkinson, the Rock River Free Clinic of Jefferson, and the Watertown Area Care's Clinic of Watertown. These three providers are in the process of consolidating their operations and transitioning into an integrated, community-based federally qualified health center. If the transition is approved by each of the clinic boards, this new healthcare organization will become one of 18 Wisconsin community health centers, which provides care to medically underserved populations at more than 140 locations across the state. The current plan is for the clinics, clinics to consolidate into one business entity on January 1, 2020. Consolidation will allow the clinics to provide enhanced coordination of care while achieving operational economies of scale. Jefferson County currently has a contractual relationship with all three clinics and provides funding through the annual county budget. The Watertown Care's Clinic receives $10,000, and the Community Dental Clinic receives $7,500. Jefferson County provides the Rock River Free Clinic with $50,000 annually, along with space in the Health and Human Services Building to provide healthcare services and a licensed practical nurse to assist medical staff. With the pending consolidation into a new entity, the 2020 budget must be adjusted to reallocate $67,500 from the three separate healthcare providers to the new healthcare provider. The county also needs to enter into contract with the new healthcare provider for services and to authorize the use of county property in the Health and Human Services Building. The executive committee considered this resolution at its meeting on November 27, 2019, and recommended forwarding to the county board for approval. Fiscal notes. Funds for this project have been allocated in the 2020 county budget. I move for approval of this resolution.
Moving in second to enter into an agreement with Rock River Community Clinic Incorporated and adjusting the 2020 budget to reallocate funds. Before we go to the discussion, Mr. Waymeyer, could you give us a brief overview of what we're trying to accomplish here?
So a little bit ago, the clinics and for healthcare ourselves and other case, key stakeholders started getting together to looking at the sustainable model for our clinics.
Um, in many cases, it, um, when we start looking at things like the dental clinic, uh, was a competition for how do you maintain a professional, um, how do you provide services with accounting on the county, the hospitals, and other great partners in the community? And how do, and how do you make sure those services can continue forward? And so, a lot of research went into, um, what is the best options in planning and look at, and one of the ideas came forward was looking at having a federally qualified health clinic, um, organization. And so, um, as, as we looked at that model, it also became, uh, apparent that we should look at, um, the three partners, although they work well together today, but making it one new, um, entity. And so, over the course of the la, um, probably last month or so, a lot of work has gone in to, uh, um, the development of this new organization, winding up the organization, and really getting everyone onto a path that, um, we can see sustainability to help those who need help the most. And so tonight, the main thing that this, uh, resolution does is in anticipation of that work ahead, um, is to continue to support these clinics with their contributions. Um, I am not recommending we change it, uh, at this time. It also gives the authority, um, to continue, um, support them through providing space. Um, right now, there's not an intention to, uh, shut down locations, um, we'll keep operating where things are at, and as this network evolves, it may actually create new space and opportunities for people to have service. Um, with that being said, then that also taps into other, um, uh, funds, um, back to these or, this organization to provide these services. So, that's kind of where we're at, um, and, and, um, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Open for discussion. Okay, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Votes are locked, twenty-eight yes, one no, one absent.
Resolution is adopted. We now go to the Finance Committee with a resolution authorizing Jefferson County to enter into a contract for property insurance with Chubb through M3 Insurance Brokers. Supervisor Jones, please.
Resolution number 201958. The current contract for real and personal property and contractor's equipment insurance expires on December thirty-first, 2019. Jefferson County, in conjunction with its insurance consultant, T.E. Brennan, thought proposals from several insurance companies ought to procure the best value for the county. Insurance companies submitting quotes included the Municipal Property Insurance Company, Chubb through insurance broker M3, and EMC through insurance broker Gallagher. Based on reviewing these quotes for cost, coverage, and ratings, staff is recommending entering in a contract with Chubb for real and personal property and contractor's equipment. The Finance Committee considered this resolution on December tenth, 2019, and recommended forwarding to the county board to enter into contracts with Chubb through insurance broker M3 to provide insurance coverage for real and personal property and contractor's equipment to Jefferson County. Fiscal note, adequate funds are available in the 2020 budget to cover this cost. I move for passage of this resolution.
Moved and seconded, seconded to authorize Jefferson County to enter into a contract for property insurance with Chubb through M3 Insurance Brokers. Discussion. Supervisor Knard, please.
Yeah, I guess, uh, don't see any costs on here, what, what kind of a cost are we looking at?
Um, as the Finance Committee heard, um, the property insurance market is crazy right now. Costs are going up all over the place, and this is no exception. Typically, nationwide seeing increases in the range of twenty percent. This has to do with increasing natural disasters as one example. Mr. Waymire?
Yeah, it was roughly about sixty-eight thousand dollars is what we received. Um, and just so everyone else is aware too, um, we used a company called T.E. Brennan to help facilitate an RFP process, so we did solicit multiple quotes, um, and this was what we felt was the best option for the price. Um, kind of reconfirm Chair Schrader's, we had some vendors because of, who chose not to quote, quote us because of the, uh, what's going on. Uh, this is a one-year quote. Um, the last time we negotiated, we were able to get a three-year quote with a, um, a fixed rate increase per year capped at three point five percent. Um, that is not available to us at this point in time.
Not a pretty picture. Further discussion? We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Votes are locked, twenty-nine yes, zero no, one absent.
Resolution is adopted. Now to the Human Services Board with a resolution recognizing John McKenzie. Supervisor Mode, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whereas John McKenzie was appointed to the Jefferson County Human Services Board in two thousand one, and whereas John McKenzie served as chairperson of the Human Services Board Finance Committee for many years, and whereas John McKenzie also served on the Jefferson County Board of Health, and whereas John McKenzie's knowledge of numbers, spreadsheets, and finances advanced the work of the Jefferson County Human Services Department, and whereas John McKenzie rode his bicycle to approximately forty-three percent of all board meetings, serving as an inspiration to everyone to be active, to take good care of themselves and to be well, and whereas John McKenzie served as a volunteer guardian exhibiting compassion, kindness, and personal ethics, and whereas John McKenzie by his steadfast commitment and thoughtfulness provided an outstanding example of commitment to public service, and whereas the Human Services Board at its November twelfth, 2019 meeting unanimously endorsed this resolution and recommended forwarding to the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors. Now therefore be it resolved that the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors, Supervisors hereby recognizes John McKenzie for his dedication, leadership, and many years of service to the people of Jefferson County. Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Moved and seconded to recognize John McKenzie. The phrase that sticks out from, uh, resolution is outstanding commitment to public service, and Mr. McKenzie certainly exemplified that. All in favor of the resolution, say yes. Opposed, no. Mixing it up a little bit. Now to the Law Enforcement and Emergency Management Committee with a resolution contracting with General Communications to develop a P-25 digital radio communication system in Jefferson County. Supervisor Morris, please.
I have resolution 201960. Contracting with General Communications to develop a P-25 digital radio communication system in Jefferson County. This was the subject of Dr. Waymire's presentation. Would you like me to read the executive summary? Something tells me that they don't want to hear it again.
Thank you.
So since we've heard all of that, um, I'll go to the fiscal note. So, three million is currently budgeted in the 2020 capital project budget account number that is listed there for this project. In order to account for the true cost of the project as discussed above, plus an amount for contingency and anticipation of potential change orders, an additional half million is hereby added to the capital project budget account number listed for you there, increasing the total to three and a half million. This budget account anticipated debt financing being acquired in fiscal year 2020. And so, since this is a budget amendment, twenty out of thirty votes are required for passage, so I move to pass resolution 201960.
Moved and seconded to contract with General Communications to develop a P-25 digital radio communication system in Jefferson County. Discussion. Supervisor Knard, please.
I guess, uh, where are we getting the half million dollars to add to it? Is that coming from contingency or something?
Mr. Waymire, please.
That'll be part of our conversation, as you noted in here, we're looking at, um, what that debt capacity might be for debt financing, and so, um, there's a couple of items we have to look at, what we, we'd recommend paying for the million dollars in cash versus being indebted for. And as part of that, this is rolling up to the bigger project of projects on the south campus, so that's where that will work together.
Thank you. Further discussion? We'll have a roll call vote, please, twenty votes are required for adoption.
Votes are locked, twenty-nine yes, zero no, one absent.
The resolution is adopted. We've already taken care of the Planning and Zoning Committee, we now go to appointments by county administrator. Mr. Waymire, please.
Begings to Chair, by virtue of vesting me under fifty-nine point one eight, parent two, parent B of the Wisconsin statute, I respectfully request the following, confirmation of the following appointments. Ms. Joan Fitzgerald of Fort Atkinson, the Bridges Library Federality System for a three-year term ending, uh, December thirty-first, 2022. Uh, Ms. Joan Fitzgerald of, uh, Fort Atkinson, Wisconsin, the Jefferson County Library Board for a three-year term ending December thirty-first, 2022. Linda Auger of Jefferson, Wisconsin, the Jefferson County Library Board for a ter, three-year term ending December thirty-first, 2022. And William Gallagher of Sullivan, Wisconsin, the Sheriff's Civil Service Commission for a five-year term ending January first, 2025. I respectfully request confirmation of these appointments.
Moved and seconded to confirm the appointments as presented. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The appointments are confirmed. Public comment of a general nature, is any member of the public wish to address the board at this time? Thank you. Announcements? Are there any announcements? Supervisor Knard, please.
I guess we've got this, uh, letter from the Public Service Commission on our desk. Are we supposed to sign that and turn it back in tonight, or what are we supposed to do?
Yes, if you would, please. If you, if you support, um, the broadband grant application, please sign it and return it to Mr. Waymire. Um, another announcement, a reminder that you may now circulate nomination papers to be reelected to the Board of Supervisors if you wish. Now's a good time to do so, if you haven't already. Um, you want to get those signatures before the holidays are upon us. If you do not attend, intend to run again, it's also very helpful if you would file a declaration of non-candidacy. Supervisor Mode and myself have already done that, that gives, uh, the people of your district the opportunity to know that there is an open seat available. So, please make your decision and file the correct paperwork.